...that will help her get in and out of bed.
In the gym where we're going to learn the pelvic pinch. This is a key exercise. It's really a movement that'll help you do what you need to do to stabilize your back so that you can make the moves in your life skills without straining or irritating your back and causing pain. To do that, Babe Samra, our physical therapist, is going to teach Anya Kiemak, who's a personal trainer and works with us here at the institute. Now, this program of back stabilization with the pelvic pinch as the key to it is what we're going to move from right now.
Okay. Anya, what I need you to do is I'm going to have you bend one knee at a time and put your foot flat on the bed, okay? Then, next thing you're going to do is I'm going to put my hand up under here. You're going to tight and gently squeeze your stomach and tighten your buttocks and push your stomach down so that you feel the pressure of my hand. Do you feel that? Now, this should be a firm feel back here, okay?
Let me just make a point here. When you get that firm feel, you should feel that firm, friendly hand of mine. I hope it's firm and friendly. And that's the way your mattress should feel. And when you're sitting down, that's the way it should feel in your back against the chair. This is key to back comfort and back support and back stabilization.
Okay. All right. So now, we're going to have you do it, okay? Once you put your legs down. All right. Now, one leg at a time, you're going to bend your knee and put your foot flat on the bed. Other knee, flat on the bed. Your stomach, everything, you're flat.
Just a point about that one knee at a time. It's much easier on your back to deal with one leg coming up at a time than when you try to bend two. And when you're having severe pain, any pain you can avoid is a plus.
Right. It's really to prevent straining. So, okay. My hand goes under here. Now, you're going to tighten your stomach and squeeze your buttocks. And that's a good feel. I can feel some pressure back there. That's perfect, okay? Now, that's the pelvic pinch. In summary, to do a pelvic pinch, you should first lie on your back with your knees up and your feet flat. Then, push your stomach in and squeeze your buttocks together. It's a very subtle movement.
Now, we're going to incorporate the pelvic pinch into life skills. Here in the bedroom, I'd like you to meet Kathy Warner, our occupational therapist. She's going to first demonstrate how to get in and out of bed with as little pain as possible. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Sweetsie. And here we have Janet with us today to help us demonstrate these. What we're going to be teaching you is how to get in and out of bed and how to do a log roll. All of these will help you do it with as little pain as possible. We're going to incorporate the pelvic pinch into these movements. Okay, Janet, first what I want you to do is do your pelvic pinch, okay? And as you sit down, reach for the bed also with your hands so that you're supporting yourself and stabilizing yourself. Okay? There you go. Once you're at that point, hold your pelvic pinch and scoot back. Okay? You can see how Janet did that. She's scooting back on the bed. Great. As Janet's going to be lying down, what we're going to want to incorporate again is the pelvic pinch. She's going to be reaching for the side of the bed and incorporating that stabilization for us. Okay, Janet? Reach for the side of the bed with your hands. Bring your legs up. There you go. Get your head down on the pillow. Good. All right. Again, maintain that pelvic pinch. And we're going to roll using these three points as a reference point. She's going to move her knees, her hips, and her shoulders together. Okay, Janet? Great. All right. And she's stabilizing and hopefully doing that in a comfortable way. Now, when we're going to get out of bed, again, we're going to be doing our pelvic pinch, holding that. We're going to move in our log roll fashion. Okay. Here we go. Pelvic pinch, log roll to your side. Good, good. Okay. When we're going to get up, this is important that you use your hands here to push off with and you swing your legs down at the same time. Maintain your pelvic pinch. And here we go. Up. Good. All right. As you can see, she's moving through these units and she's holding that pelvic pinch and using the log roll. And as we're going to get out, we're going to scoot forward again. There you go. Nice wide base of support. There you go. Okay, and stand up. Thank you. In summary, what we tried to do today is show you in the bedroom, the incorporation of the pelvic pinch with your life skill of getting in and out of the bed and using the log roll.
Wow, that was great. These are learnable skills, aren't they?
These are applicable exercises that people can take home with them and use in their everyday life to feel better when they have arthritic pain.
Well, of course, I was chuckling to myself, I must admit, because I'm thinking, okay, getting into bed, I got to move a 12-pound dog and a 30-pound dog, you know?
So it becomes a challenge, you see? And you have to learn how to do it appropriately in your setting.
Now, what about the role of exercise? I know I'm forever telling people, you've got to be more active, you know, don't become a vegetable. But good exercise can help with all of these symptoms of rheumatological disorders.
Well, there's aerobic exercise. And that allows you to increase your heart rate and allows you to function better overall, which should be done a few times a week. And there are also other things like strengthening exercises and resistance exercises, which can be done. And they can be maintained on an everyday basis to maintain what you have, your range of motion of different joints and muscles, and to strengthen what's already there. A lot of times, this can be done at home.
Right. And some simple exercises too. Sitting in a chair or being able to maybe do a squat to keep your quads tight.
Sitting in a chair and just elevating your legs up and holding it strengthens the quadriceps here and it allows the kneecap or the patella bone to become stronger when you have a knee issue there.
See, these are all handy tips. Now, it's time for another break. And when we come back, we'll continue our discussion on rheumatology and the Sweetsie Institute. We'll be right back.
I have cash for seven to nine days. I also have a copy of my passport, birth certificate, and insurance papers.
Hi, it's me. I have water and food.
Don't forget, we'll need a first aid kit and my prescription medicine.
Got your message. I have clothes and a flashlight pack. I'll bring batteries and some tools, too.
We'll bring the radio.
A disaster can happen anytime. Are you prepared? At your next family gathering, build your emergency kit. Find the 10 essential items and more at labt.org. Just be ready. Prepare together.
Before approaching an intersection. So that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn. Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to brake.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate a tailgater.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today is prevention of musculoskeletal problems. Our guest is from the Sweetsie Institute, Dr. Elise Rubenstein. Doctor, the prevention is such an important element in this. And you already showed, even sitting in a chair, how lifting your leg can help with the quadriceps and alignment. Are there other sort of simple, at-home exercises that a person can do?
Absolutely. And what I did is I brought with me one of these exercise balls that we have at the Sweetsie Institute.
Yes, I noticed that big white thing right there. Now, what is this called?
So this is called an osteoball.
Osteoball, okay.
And it's amazing tool that we have. And it's a way to strengthen muscles and in fact, increase bone mass. It has shown with some of the studies that we have. And what this is, is this ball that's inflated two-thirds of the way.
Two-thirds of the way, right.
It's used for isometric or resistance exercises. So you have two little handles here and you pull outward on it and then you hold at that place. And it can be done with a lot of different exercises.
Is it, oh, it's not heavy at all?
Very light. Anybody, even a 90-year-old can sit there and kick this up. It's still there.
Well, exactly. And there are a whole lot of exercises listed here and numbered. Now, I believe we have some footage of this actually being utilized so people can have an idea of how handy this could be. Is this something that can be prescribed at the institute?
Absolutely. We do that a lot for people that want this type of exercise. It works very well.
Well, let's take a look at an exercise using the osteoball that is a good upper-back strengthener. The trainer is Kathy Stevens.
You'll be positioning the ball behind you against the wall. You'll have the ball levelled with your hips and your palms flat against the ball. You're going to be exercising the muscles of the upper back, backside of the shoulders, and in general, all those postural muscles between the shoulder blades. So what you're going to want to do is step about two to four inches away from the ball so that your hips aren't touching the ball. And then, you're going to create the contraction by pressing firmly into the ball, palms to ball, pushing that ball against the wall. You want to progressively increase that tension, contracting between the shoulder blades, the backside of the shoulders, even a little bit down the triceps as you take the deep breath and count out, push one through push five. It's going to be important as you do this exercise that you keep your head and neck in alignment. A tendency might be to jump forward with the chin as you're pressing. So be aware of good standing alignment and then start that second repetition, pushing the palms, contracting back, opening up the shoulders and chest, squeezing and contracting, and counting down, push one through push five. And then you can relax against the ball.
Wow, that was very interesting. And it appeared to be quite simple. And those exercises are all illustrated on this ball.
It's for easy use. It comes with a manual and then people can just do it right from looking at the ball themselves once they get used to it.
Right, exactly. Well, I'm going to ask the ball to take a powder. We have heard so often that people are afraid of being evaluated for fear of terrible news. But what is the process for a person to contact the Sweetsie Institute and come in for evaluation when they know something is wrong?
So it depends the route that they're going. So if it's for osteoporosis, what they would do is they'd contact the institute. They would get an appointment and come in for a bone density examination or a DEXA. And it's a very simple procedure. They lay flat on what would be considered like an examination bed. And then you have a bar above you that just goes forward and back, takes about 15 minutes. It's not invasive, very little radiation. You get more radiation when you fly from Los Angeles to San Francisco than you would get sitting on this.
Really? Oh, that's wonderful.
Very nice to know that.
That is good because people do have concerns about that.
I ask this question a lot, yeah.
You mentioned way at the beginning here that men get more rheumatoid arthritis than women?
No, actually, women.
Women do first, okay.
Females get more than men for rheumatoid arthritis.
Doesn't that a lot have to do with hormonal changes that women go through after menopause and on?
Well, for rheumatoid arthritis, it can happen almost at any age. There is a subset of people which get it, the majority of them in their 20s and 30s and 40s. But then there's an older segment that can get it in their 50s and 60s. But things like osteoporosis, is I think what you might have been referring to.
Right, that's the one.
Yeah, can happen more commonly to women after they go in menopause. Their estrogen levels decrease. And the first seven years after menopause, there's almost a 20% loss in bone density.
Wow.
So it's really imperative at this time to go get checked with a DEXA for a bone density examination to see where you sit at and what you need to do.
I can think of so many times, Granny Grace lived with us in the house, and watching those physical changes, the shrinkage and the suddenly the back that was bowed and watching those changes.
So it's very interesting. Osteoporosis can a lot of times be a silent disease of where we don't see anything or know what's happening until a fracture or a break occurs in this spine. Other times, there can be physical manifestations of compression fractures or what you had talked about, the hunched-over feel where you get the back that's bowed.
Right, exactly.
Where the patient becomes kyphotic. And this interferes with their daily life. If you can imagine, you're hunched over and your diaphragm is then being pushed in a different direction. You have more problems breathing because you're in this position. You're walking with a forward gait, so you're walking different and there's more probability of falling.
And falls are, they're just a deadly thing.
So osteoporosis affects a large percentage of people in more ways than they even think. If they think they don't have the disease, they might.
Are other organs involved? Is this something that sort of spreads when you said systemic? Is it something that would affect, I don't know, hearing, balance?
Well, osteoporosis affects the bones because it's for weak bones. But when a patient starts to hunch over, it can affect their breathing. So there might be secondary consequences because of the bones becoming broken with compression fractures or a hip fracture. A patient might be bed bound, then they lose muscle mass and other things happened.
Well, now, the term we used was musculoskeletal. So I'm assuming muscles are involved here as well as they attach to the joints. Are those the parts of, like the pain puzzle that we go through?
So a lot of the diseases that I take care of, rheumatology encompasses musculoskeletal diseases. So the joints is where arthritis or osteoporosis occurs. And then we get a lot of other issues with muscles themselves of where they become inflamed or muscles attach to joints by tendons. And we can get a tendonitis if you've ever heard that word.
Oh, yes, I have.
So this all encompasses the musculoskeletal system. So people can have areas of pain that are next to the joint, like a tendonitis or an inflamed muscle or a bursitis. And these can be overuse injuries or things like this.
You know, it almost sounds like we're talking about the post-football weekend injury report because people are so athletic these days, especially in their 20s. It seems to me that they are doing, they are taking some long-term risks with their joint and bone health.
Well, you absolutely do. So one of the big risk factors for arthritis or tears in tendons or other things later in life is prior trauma or athletes that are excessive athletes, high endurance athletes.
Right, those extremists.
Boxers, when they're punching the bag, can hurt the base of their thumb. You have different athletes which can injure different areas. They're not even, they're more prone to it. Kickboxers can injure their hips, if you can imagine, from kicking the bag.
What about things like little league elbow? You know, we have rules where the kids aren't allowed to pitch more than a few innings.
So there's tennis elbow and a golfer's elbow, and people can get this. And I have a lot of them in that after a game of golf, they'll come to me and say, "It hurts me." And so, "It was an overuse injury."
Sure.
"They need to start abstaining from doing it in the way that they were doing it."
Asking a golfer to abstain.
A golfer who loves to golf. They just want to get back to their activities. They want to live their life and enjoy them. So we give them tips to get back.
So when you feel that twinge, now you'll have a number to call. It's up there on your screen to get ahold of the Sweetsie Institute. Now, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guest today, Dr. Elise Rubenstein of the Sweetsie Institute. And now, it's time for our feature on aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics and information that pertain to senior citizens. And once again, we found today's statistics in the recently released L.A. County Seniors' Count, a survey of the older adult population in Los Angeles City and County. That's about 1,300,000 people. So let's take a look at activities that seniors in the Los Angeles area are most interested in taking part in, in terms of activities. 47% of our senior citizens would like to be interested in recreational pursuits, 36% in educational activities, 10% would like to be involved in job training and placement, 54% more than half want physical exercise, 24% are interested in community involvement and volunteering, 42% like to be entertained at concerts, plays, and sports events, and 25% of seniors enjoy taking part in religious activities. Only 13% had no response to this particular question. And that's today's Senior Stat Shots. Now, you can get your copy of this report simply by going online to www.laccd.org. And that means the Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. Then click on L.A. County Seniors' Count and the full report will then appear. Or you can have a copy sent to you by mail by calling 213-738-2065. That's 213-738-2065. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed of the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. So please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, and we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching. We'll see you next time.
at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
Hi, this is Carrotello Family.
We are from Los Angeles, Borja Hikes.
You're watching Channel 35, our city, our channel! You're watching Channel 35, our City Art Channel!
It is now 10:07 and we are awaiting the quorum to arrive. This is Tuesday, July 26th. Thank you, Mr. Englander, Mr. Carricks, Mr. Kocori, Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Garcetti, I'm Councilmember Zion. We need 10 to begin, so we are waiting the arrival. Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Ms. Rosendahl. So we are in a hold until we get our quorum to arrive. Mr. Parks, thank you. Mr. Parks has arrived. We have nine members, one more, we can begin our meeting for today. Again, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, please come to chambers. So we can begin our meeting. It is now 10:08. Waiting to begin our meeting for Tuesday, July 26th. It's now 10:10. We're still waiting the quorum to arrive. Mr. Alarcon, please come to chambers. Mr. Weezer, please come to chambers. Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, please come to chambers. We have nine members, we need 10 to begin our meeting. Please come to chambers. It's 10:10. Ms. Perry, good morning. And Mr. Rosendahl, good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Eric Garcetti, our council president, will now assume command.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, July 26th, 2011. We're here in John Fraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. Welcome to our members of the public who are here, as well as our viewers on Channel 35 through the internet at lacity.org, where we stream on the internet these meetings, as well as archive our past ones, and also on Council Phone, which is 213-621-CITY, which allows you to listen into the council meetings using your telephone. We do have a quorum, 11 members here. We're still awaiting council members Alarcon and Weezer, but with that, we do have enough to begin the meeting, so Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardinals, Englander, Weezer, Carricks, Carrick, Orian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti. 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good to see Ms. Alarcon. Nice skills on the baseball diamond on Sunday. If we can go through First Order of Business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Zion moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, Madam Clerk, and colleagues, if there's any items you wish to call special, now would be the time to direct your attention to any items that you wish to call special. Cards from the public on items that have not yet had hearings will also trigger those to be called special. All of their items will be voted on consent. So first items, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Would you like to the flag salute?
Yes. Before we go through the calendar, if I can ask everybody to rise for our pledge of allegiance, please, and if I can ask Ms. Perry to lead us in a salute to the flag.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. If we can go through the first items on the agenda today.
Items 1 and 2 are streetlight and district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing to August 16th.
All right. I'll go ahead and continue those without objection. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, we'll go ahead and move those. Next items, please.
Item number 3 is the arts district property and business district notice for public hearing. There is request to continue this matter to August 16th.
I'd like to take a second to hear that matter. Are cards here on that?
We have some advice from the city attorney, if you might want to speak with the city attorney.
May I just... Can I make a comment on that?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Or is that inappropriate?
Mr. City Attorney? Your counsel?
My understanding is that the matter should be continued. Once there's a discussion on it, then the cards have to be entertained. And I believe the reason for the continuance is there's a hearing pending in a...
Who made the request for the continuance?
I believe the city clerk did.
Um, I... I would like to say something about it, but if that doesn't compromise the city's position...
Why don't we hold on the desk real quick, and I think you can talk a little bit further on that.
Is the TR, the application for a temporary restraining order against the city of Los Angeles?
Temporary restraining order application against the city of Los Angeles, Mr. City Attorney?
Right. There's a hearing on August 10th on the temporary restraining order.
Okay. And is there any reason why I can't speak, even though that is pending?
I would rather, if we could hold this on the desk, and then I'll talk to my attorneys.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay. We'll hold that on the desk for now. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 20 are Department of Building and Safety liens, notice for public hearing. The department reports that items 9, 11, and 15 may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid. Also, there is request to continue items 17 to August 2nd, and items 19 and 20 to August 10th.
If there's no objection, we'll continue item 17 to the 2nd, and 20 to the 10th. We'll move to receive and file 9, 11, and 15. We do have a card on 18. We'll call that special for card from the public and close the other public hearings. Any other specials on those, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead on the balance, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Yes. Ms. Perry?
I guess I missed, I blinked.
No problem.
21... Hold on a second.
Do you want to reconsider that?
I want to deny that.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration on 21, please. Oh, we haven't done 21. We just went through 20. Okay. So on 21, you move to deny? Is that correct, Ms. Perry? Okay. All right. And we do not have any cards on that. Ms. Perry moves denial of the application. Was this a vote, Madam Clerk, on this as well? Its agenda is just hearing comments, but is there a vote as well?
Yes, we need to vote.
So we'll go ahead and open the roll on denial, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. That is approved in denying the alcoholic sales. Next items, please.
Items 22 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 24 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commissioner appointments on the desk.
And I believe they're working on amending a motion for item 31. Do you wish to hold that on desk as well?
Okay. We have those items. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? 25 through 31. If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 45 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. There's request to continue item 34 to August 16th.
Okay. We'll continue that till the 16th without objection. Are there... Do we have any cards on any of these items?
There's cards on items 25 and 29. No cards.
Sorry. So on... Are we on the 32 through 47?
Yes.
We do... All right. Let's go ahead then and close the public hearings on those. Ms. Perry, 44 special?
Yeah.
Any other specials, colleagues, on 32 through 47? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
35 forthwith, please.
35 forthwith, without objection. Well done, Mr. Englander. You continue to amaze us. Let's go to public comment now. For a general public comment, Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. After that is Jose Rodriguez, and then Maria Sandoval will follow. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. Is Mr. Sacks here? Jose Rodriguez would like to come forward while Mr. Sacks is coming up. Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez. Go ahead, please.
Ready?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. My name is Jose Rodriguez. I'm chairman of the Church Council at La Plaza United Methodist Church. I'm here basically to keep the issue of the lease negotiation of my church before you, and hopefully get your support. I want to remind you that Methodist have been on the plaza since 1854. My church has been there actively worshiping every Sunday since 1899. The present building that houses not only my church, the sanctuary, but the attached building where the city offices are was built around the 1920s, around 1926, and it's for many years it served at Methodist headquarters, and the address back then was 115 Sunset Boulevard, which was actually started right there in front of the train station and goes to the ocean, as you all know. I want to remind you or ask that you continue to support the lease negotiations for my church. What we're asking for is a fair lease, a flat fee, anything short of that, including what we call pay to pray, basically puts at risk our ability to deliver services, social services to the community, and also to maintain the activities of the worship service and the congregation there. So we ask that you support the efforts, especially of our councilman, Councilman Weezer, as he advocates for us, and hopefully we ask you to support him in giving us a fair lease so we can maintain our liturgical church functions and ministry, and also deliver social services to the community. So with that, I want to thank you for allowing me this couple of minutes, and we ask that you support our councilman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that is Maria Sandoval. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Well, the time is here. The MOU is going to be signed, a non-binding MOU, so why sign documentation for the stadium? But what's really interesting is the last couple of stories that have come out lately, how AEG built its entertainment and real estate empire. Some tidbits from this news article that was in Friday's LA Times. Since AEG was formed to build Staples Center in 1995, that makes it a 15-year-old corporation, you wonder what their blueprint plans were for the area around Staples Center and the like. From the day it launched, it's $350 million staple construction with a $71 million boost from City Hall. Has that $71 million been paid back to the city? In return for $276 million in public financing for the Sprint Center in Kansas City, the company agreed to share arena profits above 16%, netting the city about $2 million a year. AEG sold the naming rights to Farmers Insurance for $700 million over 30 years, which means they get $35 million a year, but they're paying the city of Kansas City $2 million a year. Wow, that's a fair equitable deal. Records show that since 2000, AEG and its affiliates have doled out nearly $2.7 million in contributions statewide. AEG Corporation has given at least $200,000 in recent years to campaigns that backed Mayor Viera goes to state of school, state of school board candidates. In 2008, AEG gave $100,000 to the mayor's campaign for utility users tax. So that's $300,000 in campaign contributions, yet they need $275,000 from the city, or $275 million from the city to build this arena. And we don't know, according to some of the things that were said, that the arena, unless they get a football team, the arena won't be built... They need a 30-year lease. So in the timeframe that the arena is waiting around, what happens with the new convention center, the wing they want to build? Which will be built first? The convention center or the arena? We're left waiting for answers, but they're not answers, so it's okay.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler will be after our next speaker, then we'll go out to the valley, but we have one more speaker here in chambers. Like to come forward.
Yes, I want to announce that at my police station... By the way, this is my police station.
Muy buenos dias. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Sandoval. I'm ten of Los Angeles. I belong to... In Boyle Heights.
Momentito.
Estoy aqui porque tenemos más de un año de que nos prometieron que nos iban a ayudar sobre el control de renta.
I'm here because over a year ago, we were promised that you were going to help us with rent control issues.
Y pues en realidad no han hecho nada por los aumentos que cada año nos aumenta el dueño.
And to be honest with you, nothing has been done with regards to the increases, the annual increases that the owners of our apartments impose on us.
Y como todos sabemos, la economía está muy, muy mal.
And we all know that the economy is still in very bad shape.
Es una lástima que toda la comida, toda la ropa, todo lo que nosotros usamos está subiendo, pero los sueldos están en la misma condición.
It's also a shame that the food and clothing that we purchase keeps going up, the prices of those items. Unfortunately, the... Our wages do not go up. They're still at the same level as they were years back.
Y en realidad pues no miramos ninguna ayuda de que nos prometieron.
And very honestly, we have not seen any promises or anything done about the promises that you made years ago.
Y en vez de poner atención a nuestra ayuda, que nuestras peticiones pues están metiendo a nuestra gente a la cárcel.
Instead of paying attention to what we're requesting and helping us with our request, a lot of our own people are being incarcerated.
Tenemos un compañero que está en la cárcel cumpliendo algo injustamente.
One of our friends and colleagues has been put in jail. He's been sentenced for something unjust that he never did.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you very much for your words. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and she is in Van Nuys. She'll be followed by Donna Pearman. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Yes, as usual, you drag politics into people's lives. You know, these people who are here at the city have careers, and they're trying to take care of their families and everything. I have announcements here from my police station, Mission Hills, folks. July 28th, 29th, 31st, they're going to have carnival, and they're also going to have a breakfast, lunch, and dinner to raise money for an officer who has cancer. You can call him at 818-838-9800. And of course, to contact Mission Hill Safe Cities Initiative Officer Callie Packard, 838-9916. I want to tell you, the General Service Police Officer, this gentleman here, that's the security, the General Service Police Officer you told me, they're just going on furloughs. How can you have the chutzpah? They have had no contract here for three years. You got some nerve. These poor... These people are working night and day to keep our city safe here, our, you know, our city, period. You know, our government buildings. You have no respect, no honor. And then on top of that, you stick all these contracts in with no arbitration rights on your contract. Naturally, you know, you stuck that in with the 4% retiree healthcare for the LA Attorney, City Attorney Office, they turned it down. They voted down because you people didn't, that they have no right to arbitrate their contracts. You have committed a major chutzpah. You cannot get away with that. That is unconstitutional and not, it's against labor rights. That is against labor rights and domestic rights, against bisexuals, against gays, against everybody that you, that work here for the city. You have to be... And Carmen Tortaj needs to be voted out of office. He's doing an injustice to the workers in the city of Los Angeles and to the public.
Our next speaker is Donna Pearman. She's also in Van Nuys, and then we'll hear from Yvonne Michelle Autry here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Pearman.
Good morning. Anyway, we shouldn't be taking for the city employees. When the city council likes to misspend, the city council is more concerned about saving the CRA or equivalents of CRA. You have politicians overspending on the pet projects. You divert the taxpayers' attention.
I don't want to eliminate the business tax.
And eliminating... You shouldn't be eliminating the business tax because all these businesses are going to go away, and you're really going to have a problem.
No, it's what they're doing. They're going to be having less money.
We'll have less money. We'll have for city services. Anyway, you divert taxpayers' attention on the cost of public employees, and the federal government might shut down. Yeah, our federal government shut down due to the fact that the president doesn't want to raise the debt limit. Our public suffers when the agencies go on furlough, like the General Service Police. They shouldn't be on furlough. They keep our buildings safe. And everybody be ready because Social Security may be shutting down the hearing office, and then if people want a hearing, that's going to take a lot longer if we go on furlough. The city council misspends, and they don't like to really bring revenue in areas where they can bring revenue, and that's why our city is suffering. It's not from the hard-working city employees, or county employees, or state employees, or federal employees. People are being, looking in the wrong area. These just people just want to be able to have a... You know, they work hard for trying to give out services to people and to the public, and they just want to have families like taxpayers. And they're taxpayers, by the way. They also pay money in their taxes, so you can't just say the taxpayers pay for, when the public employees are also taxpayers, and they give quite a bit of their money over... money over to the taxes. So, let's stop going after our public employees, and let's tell the city council and our President of the United States and everybody else, politicians, stop misspending.
Thank you, Donna. Our next speaker is Yvonne Michelle Autry here in Council Chambers. Good morning, Ms. Autry.
Good morning, President Garcetti. How are you today? Hope you're doing well. I just like to comment that, for the record, I think that our speaking time should be extended to three minutes. And I also think that an amendment should be made so that we can address the council members directly. After all, you have the right to and the authority to address us and recognize us. You are representatives of the public. I mean, of course, the address or the comment should be appropriate, but I don't see why it would be prohibited for us to address Council Member Labange or Parks or Perry directly. And I think that that would actually bring the public in greater communion or increase our potential towards communicating directly with our representatives, and you are representing us. So, I'd like that for the record. And also, again, human right is, one of the human rights in America's housing, and that should be for all of the constituents, again, not just the wealthy, white, or middle-class, but all constituents, black people, poor people, homeless people, veterans, mentally, physically disabled. That is supposed to be, you know, actually the greatest premise of a democracy. This is still a democracy, again, I don't mind how well you're paid by real estate developers and the businesses who are fully developing and regentrifying downtown. I know it's most, it's probably very tempting for you to ignore the people who are addressing you legally and peacefully per our First Amendment right, and when you deny that, you incarcerate members of our collective who then demonstrate our, or we exercise our right to assembly protesting and demonstrating because our civil rights are being ignored and/or violated. So, again, I object to that. I'm for the record, and I guess my time is up, but I'll return about the homeless project.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. That will close our general public comment. We've had a request to take item 44 out of order by Ms. Perry. Take 44, and then we'll go to the commissioners just after that.
I'm ready. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. This item is about my concerns over the safety and maintenance issues associated with the operations of the Angels Flight Railway, and I know we have a few representatives here from the Consumer Protection and Safety for the Public Utilities Commission. If one of you or whoever wishes to speak, come to the middle table. And are you Mr. Richard Clark? Okay. And if you would, for the convenience of my colleagues, just say your names and your titles, because I don't know all. I just met you about five minutes ago.
Certainly. My name is Richard Clark. I'm the Director of the Consumer Protection and Safety Division of the California Public Utilities Commission. To my right is Anton Garibisian, one of the supervisors of the Rail Transit Safety Section, and to my left is Don Filippi, one of our inspectors in the rail transit system.
So, I want to, I just want to first thank you for traveling from San Francisco to join us here in Los Angeles on the maintenance and operation issues with respect to the historic Angels Flight funicular. And your, a couple of things I just want you to highlight, and then I'm going to let you speak, because we have a timeline. Your inspectors shut the railway down, and it was closed from June 10th to July 5th. I want you to give us an overview of the problem that led the CPUC to close Angels Flight. Also, last year, you closed Angels Flight due to a faulty door, and I want you to tell us what assurances the public has that the railway is safe, and if you feel that the operators are running it properly and safely, and that you have done everything that needs to be done to continue that safe operation.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. And, Mr. President, members, thank you for the opportunity to come talk with you here today. The June 11 shutdown of Angels Flight was due to the flanges on the wheels on two of the cars were experiencing excessive wear. The movement of the cars up and down the hill and through the interchange that's located about two-thirds of the way up, the hill was not behaving as it was originally designed. It was quite bumpy and rough, and the patterns of wear on the track structure and the guardrails gave us great, great concern. But when we measured, Mr. Filippi and Mr. Garibisian and others measured the flange on the wheels, the design specification was three-quarters of an inch. We found flange thickness on the eight wheels. On two of them were measured to be a quarter of an inch thick, and on the one was at four tenths of an inch thick. The others were close to three-quarters of an inch thick. So, we, as soon as the issue came to my attention, we got in touch with the, sent a letter to the Angels Flight and closed them down until they replaced the wheels and they determined what the root cause of the problem was, and they undertook a maintenance program to detect these sorts of problems before they get to this sort of a critical state in the future. As to, still trying to determine what the actual root cause of the problem is, but Parsons Brinkerhoff has been retained by the Angels Flight organization, and they are out there, as I understand it, on a consistent basis, looking at the wheels, trying to determine exactly what the problem was, or is, the long-term problem, root cause. We instructed them to install a piece of steel on the inside of the rail so that it would close the gap where the, where the flange, would reduce the gap where the flange goes through the connector, thereby reducing the wheel wobble and the opportunity to excessively wear the wheels. We, I can assure you that we wouldn't have allowed them to reopen if we had not thought that it was safe to operate. We are in the process of scheduling a full triennial audit, a full-blown audit of Angels Flight in either September or October of this year to look even deeper into the issues.
All right, thank you. So, you're going to schedule a triannual audit?
That's correct.
Okay, and the first one will be in September of this year?
Either September or October, right.
And the relationship, Parsons Brinkerhoff is retained by Angels Flight, or?
By Angels Flight, yes.
Okay, so they, do they come on as requested basis, or they have a schedule that's set?
I'm not sure.
No, we, we don't know that yet. We have to find out, but according to Angels Flight, they're going to visit very soon over there.
Okay, for the public record, I would like it very much if you would find that out and at least communicate that back to my office, and, you know, I can make sure that it's put on the public record in some manner. So, at this point, you're saying, I don't want to take words out of your mouth. So, your pronouncement at this point, your conclusion at this point regarding the status of Angels Flight is the following.
Is that it is, it is safe to operate, and that we're continuing to review. The, the experts from Parsons Brinkerhoff are continuing to review the situation to determine the, the root cause of the wheel flange problem. We will be following up on that to ensure that it's fixed. And we have, we have directed them to increase their, their maintenance program, and we'll be taking an even deeper look at the organization in either September or October of this year.
Okay, and as a deeper look at the organization, what will you be looking for?
We'll be looking at all of their policies and procedures. We'll be looking at their maintenance records. We'll be looking at, to ensure that they are identifying their risks, that they're mitigating their risks, and that they're maintaining their system in an appropriate manner.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. We can receive and file this or note and file it.
Okay, let's go ahead. Move to receive and file this. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. I appreciate testimony today. If we can go to the commissioners, items.
Excuse me, Mr. President. We also have the supplemental agenda. Would you like to take that up now?
Okay, let's go ahead and take up that last item, then, please.
Items 46 and 47, items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, there's no objection. Those are before us. Anybody wishing to call 46 or 47 special? Not, we do not have any cards on those. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 46 and 47, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, those are approved. If we can go back to items 22 and 23 we'll take together. If we can ask the commission nominees to come forward to the table and recognize these came through Mr. Labange's committee, believe. I'd like to recognize Chairman Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much, members. This commission, there's very two dynamic people, both raised in Los Angeles, very committed, both compelling stories why they should be on the commission. And if I could ask you to go first, if you would please, to tell the story of Hollywood High and how you struggled, but you came, overcome it, and how that you are very passionate in a very important role to be able to do this. This is Deborah. I want to ask you to speak at this time.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Duarte. I'm the Director of Pupil Services and Dropout Prevention for the Los Angeles Unified School District. I was born in the city of Los Angeles to Mexican immigrants. I attended Hollywood High School for one week. I dropped out of high school and decided to have a child at 15 and to have four more children by the time I was 25. I went back to Los Angeles Community College and then transferred to UCLA, where I earned a degree in Chicana Studies and Women's Studies, and then continued on with my education at UCLA and got a master's in social welfare, currently working on a doctorate program in educational leadership. I'm passionate about the children and the community in Los Angeles and have been providing support to children and families. I've been with L.A. USD for 17 years, and prior to that, I worked for the Los Angeles Commission on assaults against women. My work really is about making sure we're serving underserved populations, that we're providing a safe, healthy environment for our children, and that everybody has the opportunity to earn a high school diploma and continue their education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, the pride of Gardena, Sierra High.
My name is Michael Manigo. I was born and raised here in Los Angeles and went to Sarah High School, went to UC Riverside undergrad, UCLA to business school. I have over 30 years of economic and community development experience on local, national, and international matters. Currently, I'm the Community Relations Manager for Bank of America. I serve on several boards of directors and advisory councils, Shelter Partnership, Los Angeles Neighborhood Housing Services, LISC Los Angeles, Nonprofit Finance Fund, and the Watts Village Theater Company are groups that I work with now. With Bank of America, I'm involved with the foundation's activities, and I really look to see what we can do in low and moderate-income communities. And I'm actually happy to say this morning that Bank of America recently signed up for Bank on Los Angeles. It was a longer-than-expected exercise, but we did get it done, and I think we can do a lot here. The commission has a great framework in place. I think that the story hasn't been told, and I, I believe I can facilitate some collaborations that would be very useful in helping some low and moderate-income communities. Thank you.
Both Michael and Deborah are excellent recommendations by Mayor Vera Gose, and I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Wezar next on the queue, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I congratulate both of you to the supporting commission. I want to thank Deborah for her long service at L.A. USD. I've known you for a very long time, and this is an excellent recommendation by the mayor. I saw the work you did at L.A. USD with passion and commitment to our children, and it shows in all the work you've done there, and I'm sure you're going to bring that over to the commission now and provide a very important link between the city and the school district and the work you're doing there. So, thank you for your service. I know how busy it could be, working at L.A. USD, but there's also some important work here as well with the commission and linking those, these two entities up. So, I just wanted to stand up and give a strong support for Ms. Duarte, and also congratulate our other candidate for willing to serve this commission. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge your accomplishments. I don't know who you are, but Deborah, your accomplishments, having a child at 15, we talk about teen pregnancy and how that turns out to be a negative environment so many times, that just to accomplish what you've accomplished is just phenomenal. I just wanted to offer my congratulations. I'm sure that you're very proud, and your family's very proud of your accomplishments, but that is phenomenal. So, obviously, high regard for what you've accomplished. And you, obviously, you're a man of character, so we've got to support both of you. And this is a commission that really has impact on the community, so you can have a lot of difference, make a lot of changes, and that's what it's about. So, great recommendation from the mayor. So, congratulations to you both. I'm sure it'll be unanimous vote on your confirmation for this. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you, both of you, for not only your willingness to serve, but for your past service, and Deborah, for what you, your time at Le Comte and the time that you both have been able to put into this. This will be a very impactful commission. We appreciate you. Obviously, it's not for the salaries, it's for the service, since you don't earn anything, and we appreciate that and want to point that out to the public. If there's no other members who wish to speak, we'll take a vote on the nominations now. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
A round of applause for our commissioners. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. We'll take up the next commission appointment. Mr. Harutunian, come on forward. I'll recognize the chairman of our Planning Land East. No, no, he's coming, he's the commissioner. Mr. Sergeant, he's the commission, he's the commissioner nominee. He's the commission nominee. Thank you. Our apologies. I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes, now that you've safely made your way to the table, our chairman of Planning Land East Management Committee.
Thank you, Congressman President, and I want to thank our sergeant for doing his job, taking care of us. Thank you, Sarge. Mr. Harutunian, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Again, thank you for your time. Mind moving the microphone closer to you, that way I can hear you?
Yes.
Would you like to share with my colleagues your background and a little bit about yourself in terms of your history with the city?
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm, currently, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Primex Clinical Laboratories. Primex Clinical Laboratories is one of the largest medical laboratories in the state of California. I have a degree in civil engineering, bachelor's and master's from University of Southern California, with a minor in public administration. I served, I was a plan checker for Department of Building and Safety, city of Los Angeles, from 1988 to 1994, and I served the city of Beverly Hills from 1994 to 1996 as a senior, senior plan review engineer. I'm very familiar with planning codes, and this is an honor for me. I would like, this is an honor for me, and I want to make L.A. a better place to live, and it would be an honor for me to serve on the planning commission. Thank you.
Mr. Harutunian, I also feel very, can I put this, fortunate to be engaging a person who not only worked for the city of L.A., but worked in another city in the realm of development, and now is a president of a major company in Southern California, and to have your perspective and your voice as we try to become a business-friendly city, as well as one in which can move us into the whole new world of technology. But I wanted to ask you one basic question in terms of affordable housing and your point of view on that subject matter.
I think in order to make this city a better place to live, we have to have a balance in our community. Having affordable housing is very important to the community, and I'm very supporting of affordable housing, and it balances with the businesses. We need businesses to provide jobs and affordable housing for people to be able to work.
Great. So, again, colleagues, we've had a very good discussion in plumb. I would like to highly recommend Mr. Harutunian to this position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Kukorin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Harutunian for being willing to serve the city in this capacity. I've known him for many, many years in a variety of capacities. He's a, as you heard today, somebody who is a pragmatic problem solver. He's a, as you heard today, somebody who is a pragmatic problem solver and I think exactly the kind of person that we need in this position right now. It's an excellent choice by the mayor for this position and I stand in strong support of his appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kukorian, and thank you, Mr. Harutunian, as well, for your activism and your work in the community and ANC and everybody else. We really appreciate that and look forward to your service with the city again. Welcome back. Let's go ahead and take a vote then. Please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations. Round of applause for our commissioner. If we can go to the next item called special, please.
Item eighteen, called special for cards.
All right, let's take the card. Mr. Sax, item eighteen. Is Arnold Sax here? Okay, I believe he's left. We'll close the hearing. Mr. Parks, you had an amendment on eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to just add an amending motion that instructs Building and Safety to implement the eight-month payment plan with the landowner to resolve this lien. And the contract has been given to the clerk for our records.
Thank you. Without amendment, without objection, we'll go ahead and open the roll on eighteen and tabulate, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item called special.
Item thirty-one was held on the desk for an amended motion.
Okay. Do we have the motion on that? Sorry, we're waiting, we're waiting for the motion still?
We're going to reconsider.
Okay. All right, why don't we take up item number three and I'll recognize Ms. Perry.
Dionne, I'm going to just ask you to make that explanation on the record and I just want you to put the explanation.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can we give Ms. Perry's microphone on, on item three?
Great, we're up?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. We have the city attorney here who is aware of this matter and I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. If you would state your name for the record.
Yes, Kristi Newman O'Hara, Deputy City Attorney.
And I just wanted to ask you on the record, for matter of public record, what is the issue with the, as an application for a temporary restraining order and how does that affect our ability to take an action today?
Yes, on Friday, the court in Department eighty-six granted a temporary restraining order that was brought by one of the property owners. He actually owns four properties in the proposed district. And by granting the temporary restraining order, it then set a preliminary injunction hearing date for August tenth. Also, by granting the temporary restraining order, it halted any further proceedings in this Arts District matter. So, we are not allowed to hold any protest, comments, balloting, or anything today, or for that matter, anything until after the preliminary injunction date.
So, just so that I understand, it basically stops and it tracks the renewal process for now?
Correct.
Until the decision on the preliminary injunction is made by the judge?
Correct.
And would the decision by the judge be made the day of the hearing or would there be more time that elapses after that?
Most likely on the tenth, but I can't say for sure. She might take it under submission and then rule on another date.
Okay, but no matter what, until the judge renders her opinion on this matter, no further action regarding the bid renewal process can take place. So, it has basically stopped dead in its tracks right now. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, I guess what, we don't have a lot of options then, other than to let the judge render her decision and then see what comes from that then, is that correct?
Yes.
So, the date of the preliminary hearing again?
Is currently set for August tenth.
So, Mr. President, since our city attorney has set forth the reality of our unfortunate situation now, because I'm a big supporter of this BID and of most BIDs in my area because they've transformed the city and the areas that we represent in ways that the city can no longer afford to do, I guess we're going to have to ask for a continuance. If the clerk could tell me, August the tenth is what date?
August the tenth is a Wednesday, but I believe that's also Revenue Day.
Revenue Day, okay. So, what about that Friday? Would that work?
The Friday would be August twelfth.
Your Honor, if we could do it the following week though, because otherwise, it might be agendized the same way it happened today and then we might end up with the same problem. So, meaning that if the court may cause another date in the future.
Okay. Why don't we go for that next Tuesday? And that date would be August the?
Sixteenth.
All right, so we'll go for August the sixteenth. And then if we have to continue it after that, then we'll just deal with it then?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So, we'll continue to August the sixteenth.
We'll continue till then without objection. Okay? If we can call the roll on the special meeting, please?
To reconsider?
Oh, sorry, we have thirty-one still. You're sorry, which one?
Motion to reconsider twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration of twenty-one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's back before us, item twenty-one.
There's been a request from, I guess, LAPD to continue it one day to allow the applicant time to provide written documentation with a letter of non-opposition from the Los Angeles Police Department. If they're able to continue, complete that, then we may be able to resolve this matter.
Okay. We'll continue that one day without any objection. If we take up item thirty-one.
Oh, wait, I want to stop.
And that has, we've had an amending, amendment circulated, thirty-one A, without objection. We'll go ahead and include that. That's a technical change of about five thousand seven hundred dollars to one of the projects. Let's go ahead and open the roll on thirty-one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please. Yep, Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, could I get a reconsideration for ten because Building and Safety has worked out a payment plan that we need about a week to deal with?
Sure.
And also, if we could have forthwith on twenty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight?
Okay. We haven't done forty-eight yet, but on the others, we'll go forthwith. We're about to go into the special meeting in a moment. Let's go ahead and reconsider item number ten. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And do you want to read that to the record or continue it?
One week continuance so they can work out a plan.
Continue that one week, please, without objection. That will take us to?
August second.
August second. Thank you. Please call the roll for the special meeting.
Alec, Ron, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Caress, Kukorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, thirteen members present in accord, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Item forty-eight is an item of which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that is before us. We have a public hearing first. Arnold Sax is gone, I believe, so we'll add him to the file. Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys is our next speaker, to be followed by Donna Perman.
Okay, do it later.
Item forty-eight, Ms. Fogler.
I have a gentleman that just came down here and he's, he's getting involved. Let me tell you, you're all a bunch of crooks and you're cheating the city and the public and everything else. You want to cut our services, you want to take away everything by giving businesses carte blanche and helping big corporations get big, get big here, eliminate the business taxes here, folks, so they don't have to contribute anything, but yet, you ask city workers to contribute to their healthcare four percent.
Excuse me, ma'am, if you can bring it back to the nine-one-one tax that's before us, it's not business taxes. We're discussing the nine-one-one tax.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. The fact that you want to raise the tax.
Thank you.
You want to have that tax for the nine-one-one and you want to give all these other people carte blanche. You know, I mean, you know, you're just giving everything to the rich, throw the money to the rich and take from the poor. And, and you know, of course, you know, that's why the nine-one-one is overburdened, because you know, you're taking all the funding away so we don't have these services here and then you cut the, you cut the time for the three-one-one service. So, how do you expect to get service in the city if you're going to eliminate the business taxes? That's what you want to do. So, you can get the campaign contributions, take it away from the public, so the nine-one-one will be overburdened and they don't get service here. That's the idea. You're giving them all the breaks and then you, then you ask the city workers to contribute four percent retire healthcare and then you put all that other concession stuff on the contract and you make it hard for us to have services here. The nine-one-one operators, how do you expect them to work when you, when you put them on, on time off instead of paying them overtime? I think you're, you've got major chutzpah problems, bad stuff. And as far as I'm concerned, you all should be washed out of, out of, out of politics, period. Should not be into, into people giving services to the public. How dare you mix politics with services to the public?
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. That will be our second last speaker and Ms. Perman is our last one on this item.
Okay, yeah.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning. Anyway, you want to eliminate all business tax means you don't really want to help the, you want to give it only to the big corporations. You don't want to help the small people. Yeah, reasonable taxes, we want reasonable taxes. We doesn't, you don't want to make Los Angeles to grow. You want contributions from these large corporations, forget the small guy, the public and the public employee. Now, we have a nine-one-one tax. We are now in a hole, we have no money for emergencies. Our city council and our mayor made sure of that. How dare you tax and give breaks to large corporations and tax breaks to them? It should be a fair tax and now you have your hands out and want a tax on nine-one-one. I got an idea, let's get rid of five-one-one. That really is a small joke about giving over to helping people find out when the buses are going to come. It's not working. We should use that money for nine-one-one. That's where you can find money and probably even three-one-one is not working right either. We've got to stop giving money, tax breaks to the people who can afford it. You find out how much they're making and find out a fair way, because we still rely on having these taxes from these large corporations. We've got to still be able to get a fair tax out of them and then maybe perhaps you wouldn't have to tax us so much on nine-one-one. I realize we need nine-one-one, but we not, until you find a fair way to go after the large people, then you can't, no right to go after the small people saying that, you know, you can't buy your groceries, you know, you got to, and you can't have ways to live because we're going to take money from you, but the large corporations, oh, well, let them have as much breaks as possible. That's not right. You're backwards.
All right. Thank you. That will close our public comment on this item. Anybody wishing to be heard on forty-eight? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can recess, sorry, adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Caress requests to be excused on August nineteenth for personal business and that meets council policy.
All right, he's approved.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Do you have any announcements today? Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to make sure the community's aware of a important meeting on the Crenshaw Line that addresses issues. It's going to be held at eleven-thirty-seven East Redondo Boulevard in Inglewood and the MTA will be having a community census building and it's going to be on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM and talking about the Crenshaw Line as it goes from Los Angeles through the Inglewood community.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any other announcements? All right, if I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. If I can ask everybody in council chambers, please to rise for our adjourning motions. Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn memory of two individuals that I'm sure other council members will want to speak about as well. First, I was very saddened to hear about the death of a friend and Mr. Weezer and I were just with him on Memorial Day, George Ramos, a great journalist, veteran, great American and a great Angelino. I first got to know George when I was a graduate student. I had taken off in my second year studying abroad in England. I took off six months to work on the campaign of Kathleen Brown for governor and became very active in the campaign against Proposition one-eight-seven at the time. Upon the passage of that, what I considered very mean-spirited initiative, I went back and led a group of students that were fasting in protest of one-eight-seven and Mr. Ramos found out about it and called me in England way back then and we started a friendship. He wrote a column about our work and our activism and we formed a friendship that carried on for a number of decades. George Ramos was an incredible individual, a Pulitzer Prize winner, a reporter, an editor, a teacher, a columnist in the Los Angeles Times. He paid, he played a key role in what was the groundbreaking and Pulitzer Prize-winning series about Latinos here in Los Angeles, in which he described life on the streets of Los Angeles for Latino families, comparing it to just the normal sorts of community and family occurrences that happen in any place in America, but showing how American it was. It was the same, he said, as growing up in Kansas next to the wheat was the same here, growing up in East LA and Boyle Heights. Ramos had diabetes and it seems that that may be what he passed from, but he worked at the Times from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and three. He became a journalism professor at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo after that. Frank Sotomayor, who was former Times editor, who worked closely with him on the Pulitzer Prize-winning series, and by the way, he had his hand in two other Pulitzers as well that he shared some credit for, said that he was a very strong street reporter. He knew Los Angeles very well and he was able to talk to people and get their stories. The piece I'd like to add about George is he was also a very proud veteran. He served during the Vietnam era, first in Europe and then in South Vietnam, and he always looked out, especially in the Latino community in East LA, for veterans who had been discarded and forgotten about. And I think it was a big deal that he came this year, Mr. Weezer, to the ceremony that you and I attended, to be our emcee and to speak, because he kept close in touch with some of the folks from VFW and, and others in the lodge that he is members of, but he had been very private about a lot of his work as a veteran, but I think he really wanted to daylight that and we're blessed to have him there. But he was a funny guy, a serbic, didn't, didn't give any respect in the right way to anybody because of their position, but gave respect to people because of who they were in their hearts. And he wrote about so many people. I remember after the nineteen ninety-four election, Kathleen Brown lost pretty badly, as you recall, but he wrote a column calling her the Californian of the Year for standing up and what she, standing up for what she believed in. George was that kind of a journalist, fearless, personable, had a strong sense of who he was, never married, but married to the art and to the love of journalism itself. I don't know if there's other, other members who'd like to speak on, Mr. Ramos?
It could be fitting of all councilmembers sign this adjourning motion and I certainly look forward to seeing him every Memorial Day at Cinco Puntos in Boyle Heights where we celebrated the commitment of veterans and also particularly Latinos, who many of them have come from the streets of East LA in Boyle Heights. As Mr. Garcetti said, he was a proud veteran. He looked forward to that event each and every year and, and he also had a strong sense of humor and one of the most somber moments, he could then turn quickly and say a joke about something and people followed through with him and were right there with him, didn't lose anyone. He was someone who, not only he respected people, no matter who they were, but everyone respected him. You could see that as people approached him and talked to him, not only for his service as a journalist and a veteran, but also just simply for the person he was. It's interesting to see the outpouring of, of love and support that people have given him. Many people are talking about how he was a mentor to them and how he went out of his way to talk to young journalists, to young people about what it's like to be a journalist, about being true to themselves, being true to where they came from, and about working on behalf of causes that they believe in. Really a great individual and Los Angeles is not going to be the same without him. He was a great individual all around, above and beyond everything else, just a great person that he was great to be around and had a lot of wisdom that he shared with those people around him. I certainly will miss him and miss seeing him every Memorial Day in Boyle Heights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Reyes?
When I heard that George passed away and I read, I had some thoughts about my reaction to him during the nineties, after the riots and President Clinton was rolling out the empowerment zones and the enterprise zones and he would come into the office and ask, what was the city doing and how is it doing it? And remember, my reaction to him was, wow, this guy's pretty abrasive, he's like in your face and I didn't really like it. He was just in there digging in and after the interview and the discussion, he starts talking about the neighborhood and just down-earth guy and like a complete face change. He was just a very warm person and I think he kind of knew he was kind of rough with me and so, you know, we need to ask these questions and he- me, and so, you know, we need to ask these questions, and he laid it all out, and he came back for more, and he did not mince any words. And I thought that was rather cool, that he could change gears like that and dig in, and like Council President Garcetti said, it's not so much lack of respect, it's more of he wanted the truth, he wanted the facts, and basically did not hesitate to ask uncomfortable questions. So, we're going to miss him. We're going to miss him. Because of his influence, I think a lot of folks probably learned what it is to seek that truth, as painful as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
About George and the time, at the Times, being in this building, and also his love of Los Angeles, you know, and as you said, you just saw him on the thirtieth Memorial Day, his participatory role. There's nothing like a reporter who knows and loves Los Angeles and then challenges it. The fourth estate is very important, and George certainly fit that role. He'll be sorely missed. He was always very, very nice to me as a human being, which is special.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. I also ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of another great Angeleno who has passed as well, Chuck Manatt. Chuck Manatt was born in Chicago during the Depression, moved to western Iowa in nineteen forty-two, and somebody who was an incredible, not only national leader, but also his impact here locally on business and throughout the country was incredible. He died at the age of seventy-five on July twenty-second. He had a fifty-year career. He also met his wife in elementary school, and just as important as his career, had fifty years of marriage that they celebrated in two thousand and seven and beyond. He served in the United States Army, in the JAG Corps, was probably best known for his time as an ambassador and as chairman of the Democratic Party. And he was described in obituaries as a bipartisan leader of the Democratic Party. Can you imagine that today, when politics have gotten so partisan, to have somebody who, together with his Republican counterpart, for instance, founded the National Endowment for Democracy, which has an international impact of promoting democracy around the world? But he was a man of incredibly good humor and honesty. His political and business accomplishments are too many to list here, but it was his time when he became first chairman of the California Democratic Party in nineteen sixty-nine and then nineteen eighty-one. One thing that he had a huge impact on is he promoted then-Congresswoman Geraldine Ferraro to be head of the Platform Committee of the DNC, which then led to her being later nominated as the first vice presidential nominee woman in a major party, and he oversaw many changes like that. He was made ambassador to the Dominican Republic by President Clinton from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and one and had a huge impact. He survived by his son, who is father Timothy Manatt, Daniel Manatt, and three grandchildren. In lieu of flowers and to honor Mr. Manatt, donations and his memory can be made to the Omaha Community Foundation, to the Charles and Kathleen Manatt Democracy Studies Fellowship at the International Foundation of Election Systems, and to the Institute of Latin American Concern at Creighton University. Other members, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd love to second that as well. I knew him over the years from various levels of interaction. Reminds me of Joe Sorel in many ways. He was the same kind of a guy that liked to bring people together and compromise and work things out. Being a political operative myself in my earlier parts of my life for Bobby Kennedy and George McGovern and others, I got to know him in that role, and then with my television show, he was engaged with me on that. But like you said, Eric, you know, we could use more Chuck Manatts in today's political world, where polarization seems to be the insanity, and that kind of reaching across the aisle, the idea that we can work together and that together we can make a difference was always his motto and the way he lived his life, and he was an inspiration to everybody, a true professional in his work and a really good, decent human being.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Members, unfortunately, this is sad, a young firefighter, not on duty, but an active firefighter, Station Twenty-nine, does not feeling well. He's in his neighborhood in Inland Empire. Unfortunately, goes by a fire station, and they say he should get in the hospital, and he passed so tragically. Eric Shepherd, just a firefighter, three, Task Force Twenty-nine, leaves a daughter and his girlfriend as well as his parents. I ask for adjourn totally and unanimously for Eric Shepherd, Los Angeles City firefighter. His services will be held at ten a.m. this Friday at Crenshaw Crusade Center. A life taken too early, Eric Shepherd, Los Angeles City firefighter.
Thank you, we'll put all members on that. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will next be in session tomorrow. That is Wednesday, July twenty-seventh. Have a great day. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned.